Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started with the March 11th County Council. Let's rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up is Auditor's Financial Report.
Good morning. Started the year with a beginning net balance of $7,521,557. We've granted appropriation requests last month of $300 and have requests before you this month of $35,374. We haven't had any miscellaneous expenditures yet to date, so that leaves you with $7,521,257 available for appropriation. As far as revenues for the month of February, we are sitting at a 7.4% collection rate on those, and I did not have anything specific to point out unless you had any questions about anything. Same is true for the fund report. We can all see the balance of Fund 4710, so I wasn't going to bring that up, but probably something to continue to keep an eye on. Other than that, I had two agenda corrections, one being on the coroner's salary statement. On the salary statement itself, there is, under the bottom section, an increase of the deputies' cases, but it is not on the agenda. And then also, under Recorder, the, one of the positions is noted as USS and it's actually a UCC position that they're asking to eliminate. So that's all I had.
All right, thank you. All right, Treasurer's Report, we will not have one today. Yedira had to go out of town for some family matters, so we do not have a report today. Any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay. All right, let's go ahead with Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion where you approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, motion is in place from Councilman Murray and second from Councilman Richard. Any discussion? Any? Nope. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Right, additional appropriation, Superior Court III salary statement.
I'm making a motion where you approve the Superior Court III salary statement for 4D Commissioner as presented.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilwoman Vernon. Any discussion?
Yes, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess for the record, I'm Judge Graham, Superior Court III. And the request to transfer the 4D Commissioner position from part-time to full-time was discussed with the Personnel Committee. They have a recommendation to approve that as of July 1 at a specific salary of approximately $101,000. We are hopeful, perhaps, that this body might consider increasing that salary amount because it is low compared to judicial officer salaries across the state and positions similar to this. And the current 4D Commissioner is present. I would like her to present some details to you for your potential consideration of that request.
Good morning. Mandy Grusman. I'm the current part-time 4D Commissioner here. I've served in this position for about four years now. Before you, you have a handout, or we'll have a handout, that goes through some of the details about the position and some of the details regarding the salary in similar counties and how the salary compares to other judicial officers. So currently elected judges in the state of Indiana make about $183,000 by statute. That is changed every, so often by the Supreme Court administration. The magistrates statutorily make 80% of what the full-time elected judges make. That is, again, by statute, so the magistrate's salary will go up as it coincides with judicial salaries each year. The county only pays a portion of that salary for the magistrates and the rest is covered through the state. The full-time 4D position is, in essence, a magistrate position, but is completely county-funded. So the full-time position, I would have the same responsibilities as a magistrate. I would have a full caseload. I would hear matters every day, have hearings every day, sign off on orders. The only difference is, is when I sign off on an order, if it is an order that is appealable, then the elected judge would countersign that. Magistrates used to have a counter-signature requirement as well. That was changed not long ago, and so most magistrates don't require that counter-signature. If you look on the first page of your handout, it talks about the weighted caseload study, the need for judicial officers, as well as goes through some similarly populated counties in the state of Indiana. On Page 2, there are several other counties in the state that have full-time juvenile referees, is what they call them, full-time commissioners, and their salaries are outlined there and the years that those numbers were pulled. The current recommendation of 101,773 is approximately 55% of what the elected judge would make and only 69% of what the magistrates would make. So the position as is would only pay 69% of what the magistrate makes for essentially the same work. The other counties, some counties such as Lawrence County, has proposed that their commissioners make a percentage of the judicial salary as well. I would propose that this council consider that as well. If we were to even put this at 70% versus 80% as the magistrate, the figure would be closer to $128,000. So in keeping in line with some of the other judicial officers in the state, taking into consideration the caseloads, and not only that, judicial officers are held to a higher standard in regard to their personal lives as well. There are many restrictions through the judicial code of ethics. So this job is not, it's very different than just practicing law full-time, such as an attorney would, because you are under a different set of rules, a different set of responsibilities. And so I would propose that this council consider the salary, a salary increase based on some of the information that's presented in this handout. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. So the part that talks about the counties are statutorily required to fund $41,393 of the salary. So do you know, I mean, are we at that, are we below that number? And what is the county paying versus the state right now?
So for, that's for the magistrate positions. That's what the county is statutorily obligated to fund. I will note that with this being a 4D position, there are some reimbursements from the Title 4D program. So this is not completely out of pocket from the county. It does get reimbursed on a federal level through 4D funds.
Okay.
Sadie, has this position gone through the WISC assessment and it came back to 101?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so. I was trying to, yeah, Sadie had answered your question here, yes.
So the question before us is, are we approving the moving from full-time, part-time, I'm confused. What is the issue before us? Because this is 101, you're talking about something higher than 101. Is that for something for us to consider in the future? Like, are you asking us to consider that now?
I'm asking for you to consider it now.
But you don't have an exact amount that you're asking for right now.
I would ask for, I would ask for 70% of the, what elected judges make, which would put us at 128.
The 122,500, what percentage is that at? Or how did you get to that number exactly at the very end?
Where am I at here?
Yes, 122,500. So I don't recall, to be quite honest, how I, what a percentage I added there.
Okay, but the 128,1, you just said that's the 70.
128 would be 70%, and that could be in line. 122,5, I think, is more in line with what the other counties are paying. So that is an average, more or less an average of Monroe, Lawrence, and Elkhart Counties with Wayne and Porter considered. So if we take a look at Monroe being at 126, Lawrence at 123. Now, the 123 was for year 2023, so that could have increased. And same with Porter County at 111. That could be, that could have increased as well, since I only had 2023 data available. So if we look at the, the 122,5 would be in range with those other similarly situated salaries.
My opinion, Ms. Grusman, at this point in time is to keep at 101, have an internal discussion.
Absolutely.
You know, and with budgets coming up in August, certainly it'd be a great opportunity as we sit on it and kind of process all the changes that are occurring. I do understand the 4D is also reimbursable, so there's some things there that are unique to the position. Obviously, I fully support moving to full-time. I think it's very much needed, talking to Judge Graham over the years. And then can we get back to you? So we'll approve today the 101, is my opinion. And then, and then again, have internal dialogue and discussions and then get back to you on the request for 122,5 or 128, whatever the 70% may be.
Yeah, and thank you for your time. I appreciate you taking the time to consider it and discuss it, and thank you today.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments from counsel? Are we ready for, go ahead.
I agree with Ben. I think that would be the prudent stand, is to go with the moving up from part-time to full-time at the 101,773 amount.
And again, that, that is what the Personnel Committee came to, with looking at the range that was presented to us. But I appreciate this data, and we can look at this as we're moving forward and thinking about budgets for next year.
Absolutely. All right, are we ready for a vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, Superior Court 6.
I move that we approve the Superior Court 6 General Fund 1,000 in the amount of $30,000.
So Judge Morrissey was planning on being here. He had a meeting. He was hoping to be here around 9:00. Is it possible to move this to the end of the meeting?
Sure. We can do that. All right, there is a motion in place, so we'll just, we can just write, okay, thank you. All right, so then let's go ahead and move forward, and we'll come back to Superior Court 6 at the end. So let's move forward with coroner's office salary statement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the salary statement for the coroner, for Deputy Coroner, Office Manager, Poll 3, 56,439.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Any discussion?
Good morning. Yes, just to say, over the years, we've had the responsibilities of this job expanded, and we've updated the job description. We've checked it through WISC. We've gone through the Personnel Committee. And the big bulk of it is supervisory duties, making sure the supply inventory is in place, disitting care, autopsy viewing, evidentiary reports, tissue sample retention. So over the years, we, as you know, we continue to grow, unfortunately. And this position, I feel like, needs to be adjusted and reclassified to a Poll 3 from a Poll 2.
And also on the salary statement, it includes, it was on the agenda, but is, like Jennifer said, the $150 per case for the deputies as well. Is it included in this salary statement?
Yeah. For the deputy piece, when I started back in 2000, we were getting paid $100 and that, per case. Now they're getting paid 125. So over the last 25 years, we've raised it up to 125, and I'm requesting that we now pay 150 per case.
And that was also approved by Personnel Committee as well? Any questions from counsel?
Do we need to amend the original motion to include the deputies?
I don't think so. You've got a salary statement that you're, that you're entertaining.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, ready for a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Appropriation.
Make a motion for the General Fund appropriation in the amount of $3,763.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Anything to add with this?
And this is just to cover what we just did in increasing the salary.
All right. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Community Corrections, Community Corrections Donation Fund.
Make a motion, reapprove Community Corrections Donation Fund, 4124, appropriation in the amount of $100.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilwoman Vernon. Any discussion?
Good morning. We hosted a training that 15 counties attended. And we received donations from a community provider to cover supplies. So we're just asking for appropriation to cover that.
Good morning.
Thank you.
And for those of you who don't know, this is Kate.
Berkshire.
Yeah, Deputy Director of Community Corrections. Kena could not be here today.
Welcome. All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Health Department.
Make a motion, reapprove Health Department Donation Fund, 4118, appropriation in the amount of $6,500.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Any discussion? Good morning.
Good morning. These are donations. We have an event that I have to wait till the Commissioners, FYI, to talk about, to feed our volunteers. And then in addition, we have the big community baby shower coming up, so we've had some partnerships from there to donate to us.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel?
No, I think this is a great event.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Sheriff.
Make, you want to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion, reapprove the user fee sheriff continuing ed fund, 2575 appropriation in the amount of $2,550.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilwoman Vernon. Any discussion?
So I talked to Sheriff Goldsmith yesterday. What this was is a training done that didn't, forgot to, didn't get encumbered. A dive team member went to, I think, South Bend to get trained and just didn't get encumbered. And so this is just covering those expenses for that training.
That's exactly what he said.
Ditto.
The sheriff is at testimony this morning at 9:00 a.m. down at State House, so I think his services are better utilized down there.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, any other questions from counsel? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, Commissioner's Salary Statement.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary statement for the Office Manager, Comet 4, in the amount of $54,629.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is actually to reclassify the Office Manager position from a Comet 3 to a Comet 4, which would put him more in line with what other office managers throughout the county make. Also with due to the increased, or things that we have placed on to the Office Manager position, including the fleet management, the extracartograph system, and the implementation of our new payroll system, his duties, that position's duties have increased quite a bit. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any comments from counsel or questions?
And it did go through, it went through the WISC study, the Personnel, as well as Commissioners.
Any questions from counsel? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now for the appropriation.
I'll make a motion for the General Fund appropriation in the amount of $1,611.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
And this is just additional dollars to pay for that upgrade.
Any questions from counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Opioid Restriction Fund, 1237.
I'll make a motion to approve the opioid restricted fund, 1237 appropriation in the amount of $260,800.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is just to cover the agencies that we, the TROSEC, has awarded funding for the opioid settlement money that needs to be appropriated and spent to the agencies.
Sharon, are you requesting, though, that the, all of the money be for grants and support rather than broken out by food and supplies?
I would love to have it that way.
Okay. That is what our office prefers because the food and supplies and the vehicle repair amounts are actually going to those agencies. So that's, I would just like it to all be within grants and support.
Awesome.
Do we need to do anything for that?
You should probably amend your motion to reflect the same amount, but into the grants and support line item.
You good with that?
You aren't good with that?
Yep, I'm good with the, second the amended motion.
There you go. All right. Okay. Any questions from council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Fund 1238.
I'll make a motion for the opioid unrestricted fund, 1238 appropriation in the amount of $260,000.
Second.
Is that going to be in the grants and support as well?
Okay, grants and support.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
And this is the unrestricted funds that the county received that the Commissioners agreed that we would also give to the agencies through the granting.
Do we have a, I assume you have a list of these agencies?
I sure do. When we have a meeting coming up, April 17th, you're more than welcome to join us. Councilmen Vernon and Dolam are on that committee, and they help oversee how we do these agencies. It's all public record. We're going to have, our website will be up and running, hopefully sometime this month before our April 17th meeting. We're doing an evaluation of the agencies right now. We have an evaluation committee that is looking at the SMART goals that they proposed in their application, and we're making sure that the funds are being spent the way the SMART goals have been presented.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recorder's Salary Statement for new positions.
Make a motion, reapprove the salary statement for the Recorder's Office as presented.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, I didn't know if you had any questions. I would like to take the UCC Supervisory Data Specialist down to a document processing analysis from a Comet 4 to a Comet 3. And then the second one was a data entry, and I would, she was a Comet 2. I'd like to move her to a Comet 3, also as a document processing analysis.
And both these have been approved by Personnel Committee and the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
Gone through the process. Thank you for going through the process.
Thank you.
Any questions from counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Then the second one.
Make a motion, reapprove Recorder Records Perpetuation Fund, 1189, as presented.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Any questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Any committee reports?
Come back to Judge.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, he is here. Thank you. All right, let's go back to Superior Court 6.
So I make a motion to approve appropriation for Superior Court 6 in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
I am Judge of the Superior 6, but I'm also the supervising judge of, for all the courts of the interpreters. We're asking for $30,000 to get us through the rest of the year. We received a $10,000 grant from the state of Indiana, and that ran from fiscal year June of '24 to June of '25. That money was gone as of November 19 of 2024. The county, you all had given us $15,000 for this calendar year. As we speak right now, so far in January and February, we've used $4,270 of the $15,000 that the council had given us, so we've got a balance of $10,729. As we speak today, right now, we've got a bill for $18,939. So here we are, early March, and we're already at a deficit of $8,210. Now, some of that's carryover from 2024. A company called Luna, it's also called Globo now, had submitted bills of almost $18,000 last year, and it came through as almost a lump sum, hey, you owe us this money. And we refused to pay it until they gave us an itemization, and that just came in. So that kind of explains why we're in this situation right now. Some of it's from 2024 carryover. But again, as we speak right now, we have a deficit of $8,210. We spend about $2,500 to $3,000 each month on interpreters for those expenses. We've got 10 months left, so, you know, 10 times 3,000 would be 30,000. That's the high end. It might be $2,500 a month. Hopefully, in June, we'll apply again in April for another state grant and hopefully get another $10,000 that would come in in June. We've also asked the state for an emergency $5,000 grant to help us this year currently. So there's a chance we're going to get $15,000 from the state yet this calendar year, but that's not a guarantee. So that's why we're asking for the $30,000. Things have changed so much. When I first took the bench in 2021, or 2001, I would maybe have three Spanish-speaking defendants on Monday mornings for initial hearings that require translation or interpretation. Yesterday, I had 20, on just Monday morning alone. The numbers have increased so much, and the nature of the interpretation has changed greatly as well. You know, it used to be just Spanish. Now we have Burmese, Haitian Creole, Indian. Sign language is big. Faith Graham in Superior 3, I know, has one case where mother, father, and the child are all hearing impaired. They all have different interests in the case, so they all need a different translator. So every time she has a hearing with those, with that family, she has to have three sign language interpreters. So it all adds up, and the expenses are, in my mind, getting a little bit out of hand, but there's nothing we can really do about it. And again, the 30,000 is not for Superior 6. It's for all eight courts and the, and the two magistrates. And I think 30,000 probably would suffice 25. I have a feeling we're going to be back again before the end of the year, but I'd ask for a $30,000 appropriation for the interpreter budget.
Thank you.
All right, any questions at all?
So one thing to note with the $18,000 that you were talking about, that ended up not being spent in 2024, so we still have that money and.
Correct. Right, we returned some money in 2024. But the fact of the matter is, is, so if I get, if we get $30,000 appropriation today, knock $8,210 off of it right out of the gate. So that's going to leave us $22,000 to get through the rest of the calendar year. And again, we might get money from the state, but there's no guarantee. Years ago, we'd get between $15,000 and $20,000 as the initial grant. And then if they had leftover money, hey, anybody want more money? And of course we do. So there's years we got $20,000 or more, and that, that, as the need goes up, the grant offering goes down. And it's kind of contrary to what you would think would happen, but we aren't getting the money from the state that we used to.
Judge, do you feel that with this $18,000 that you just paid for '24, did you get caught up? Do you think there's any other outstanding bills?
No, that should be it.
That should be it.
Yeah, that should, it was from one company. And like I said, the only reason that's not paid and we returned money last year is we refused to pay it without knowing. without knowing what the, you know, what the billing was all about. So we aren't haphazard about it by any stretch.
And I understand that, I understand. I just wanted, I'm thinking, okay, if we're giving 30 now, hopefully we're caught up so that, you know, you're not going to be surprised.
There's always carryover from year to year. Like the last quarter billings are usually paid the next calendar year. So there's always a little bit of a lapse, but as far as a big bill, it should be it.
Good.
And we try. There's something called landline that you can use. We were told not to use them for guilty plea hearings, but informal hearings that we can use. You actually call a line, you know, your landline, call a number, and you say, okay, we need Spanish, we need this, that. And they hook you up with a interpreter that can speak the different languages, Haitian Creole, whatever. And so we can use that in court, but it's limited. It's kind of an informal use of interpretation or interpreters. And we can't use it for certain hearings, but it is kind of a Band-Aid approach that helps us reduce these expenses.
What is the status of the emergency grant application that you submitted?
The emergency?
Yeah.
We don't know.
Okay.
We submitted it about 60 days ago, 30 to 60 days ago, and should hear. As far as the other 10,000, the grant we'll ask for, we apply for that in April and usually, you know, hear by mid-May or so. So we'll know about that in about three months. As far as the emergency requests that we submitted, I just don't know where it's at right now. We've not heard back from the state.
Okay. And then another question. Like what kind of technology have you looked into with translation services now that that's getting pretty advanced? Is that something that you guys consider?
Well, about the only thing we can use is that landline. There's not, and obviously you can't use the landline for sign language, and that's beginning a big, big use of the interpreter money. But there's really not a whole lot of technology out there. So if you're talking about Zoom or Team or Remote.
I mean more like translation capability, like artificial intelligence, those kinds of things to actually translate.
At this point, there's just nothing out there, really. It's pretty much landline or a live body.
Okay.
One thing, I had a jury trial last year, and it was Haitian Creole. And I know we had a meeting of judges, regional meeting, late summer, and everybody was talking about, we can't find Haitian Creole translators. And I had to bump a jury trial because I needed two. It was a Haitian Creole, and you needed two for a jury trial. And we had a heck of a time finding translators. We finally found two through this Luna Globo, and they really enjoyed working in the court. And they asked if they could be independent contractors for Superior Six or for the Tippecanoe County Court. So we kind of latched on, luckily, to two Haitian Creoles. And it's a big problem trying to find those. So we're pretty fortunate in that regard. Anything else? And again, I, we're asking for 30. I think, Kathy, as you suggested, I think that'll get us through the year and no other unpaid bills that I'm aware of at this point in time. Probably less than that, there's a good chance. I just feel we'll be asking for more money before year end.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion from counsel?
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second in place. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, now we'll go back to committee reports. Any unfinished business? New business? Commissioner, FYI.
Well, the luck of the Irish to y'all. Stacy has something great to say.
So this is the event I'm really excited about. We have been working on this for six months or so. It's called Send Silence Packing. It is a company out of Washington DC, and their main focus is to build a labyrinth for folks to walk through to give awareness to mental health and kick the stigma of suicide. What it is, it's backpacks, and they all have stories that you walk through. You read about loved ones that have, loved ones that have been lost, and you talk to people who have been there or that have been directly impacted. So me and about two of my direct coworkers have worked on this, and then now it's all hands on deck. So this will be March 20th from 9:00 to 4:00 and at Ivy Tech campus. And we're hoping outside, but we may end up moving it inside.